Counsel, if you'll come to order, it's one minute after 7:00 PM on Tuesday, March 10th. We do have a quorum. Counsel member Reed is not here. He's out of town on vacation. In just a moment, I'm going to ask everyone to stand. We'll be led in our invocation by Councilmember Perro and then be led in the pledges to the U.S. flag and the Texas flag by Council Mayor Protem Lamont. Please stand.
What is prayer? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity we have to come together here in Trophy Club to discuss the business of this community. We offer special Thanksgiving for what we just completed celebrating with Stephen Seidel becoming our new town manager and willingly taking on these duties and responsibilities. And we pray that you will give him the wisdom and the confidence to fulfill his duties and obligations for the betterment of our town and the benefit of all its residents. We ask that you guide us in our discussions this evening as we seek to do what is right, that all the citizens might enjoy the beauty and joy that comes from living here in Trophy Club. We ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. Counsel, we will convene into a workshop session to discuss Item 1 and Item 2. I'll read those and that way we can just move into two when we're ready. Item 1, Discussion of Agenda Items Posted for Consideration on the Regular Session Counsel Agenda for March 10th, 2015. That's tonight. And Discussion of Agenda Items Posted for Consideration on the Upcoming Regular Session Counsel Agenda for March 24th, 2015. Counsel, do you have any questions that you'd like to ask about tonight's agenda at this time?
I was curious again on the 90-day trigger, why number 6 wasn't on there. Four and seven, I think we've pretty much dealt with. Six was...
What were you talking about?
Yeah, the future agenda.
Right.
I'm not sure who put six on. It doesn't have a name. I don't remember. I know we talked about it, but I didn't remember it going on future agenda.
That was Jim. That was you, Jim? What about now?
We discussed it during the budget last year, but I don't remember that we actually put it on an agenda for formal discussion.
I do recall when we last discussed it, we chose not to, obviously not to make any changes to any current arrangements, but we did say we should put our desire for the policy in writing in some fashion. And I'm thinking that this came from that. I remember it coming from the group discussion, so it might have gotten put on through that, through having heard that rather than someone specifically putting it on this list.
So are you asking...
Sorry, I was pulling it up real quick.
Are you asking about tonight's agenda or two weeks from now? Are you looking at your future agenda?
No, this should usually be... I think it says...
One March.
One March 10th, so that's tonight.
Oh, why it didn't come on? Gotcha.
Well, I can understand four, six, and seven should have been on, but four, we've obviously tasked CFAB, and seven, you know, we have a meeting this week and then it's on for the next council meeting. But six maybe should have been on there because I don't know that we really need to have... Maybe we can direct. Maybe we can take that off. I don't know.
I also seem to remember too, Councilman Rowe was talking about mileage allowance in our budget discussions versus a flat monthly allowance and the reality of how much an employee with a car allowance might travel in a given month. And would we want to consider going with mileage at the end of a month and reimburse them for that at the standard federal rates or continue with the monthly allowance? I think that was discussed.
I'll... And I think I appreciate Councilmember Schaffner bringing this up because, you know, what I've heard from the council formally and informally is that this is something that perhaps is not we want to offer to every employee. And so I know that as I've extended an employment offer to a future employee, I did not include this. I found a different way to, you know, whether it be salary or some other option, I just... This was sort of one of those things that this was not going to be something this council would like to do. It is a common deal for certain positions, but if, you know, for me, I don't necessarily need a formal policy saying yes or no. I kind of know what I think the council's position is on this, and that's the way I've kind of moved forward even with Stephen Glickman.
Okay, so counsel, you've heard the statement from Phil. Do you want to have a discussion on an agenda item that deals with a policy? If not, we'll just remove it from future agenda. Anybody want to keep it there for discussion? All right. So Holly, if you'll make note, we'll try to bring it up again when we get down to future agenda that we'll remove Item 6.
Okay.
All right. Anything about two weeks from now agenda?
I know the baseball contract is on there, but is that inclusive of tournament, the tournament schedule?
I think our plan is to meet with them this week and kind of hash out not just baseball period, but kind of how everything works.
Okay. I kind of think that that should just be on a workshop. I look back, last year, we approved the fall contract July 22nd, so it's not... I mean, I know that we've rushed, 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 but we do have time. And so perhaps we should discuss it, maybe give people opportunity to discuss it rather than... I'm not sure why, you know, I mean, I guess it doesn't matter.
I think one thing we can bring up with our meeting is the totality of everything is sort of, this is, it's not just about, you know, the kids and the signing up and the fields. It's also kind of, it's a holistic approach. So I think, you know, we'll see how that discussion goes, and I think we can come back with something. And I think Philip, maybe, or Councilmember Schaffner may have a good point about having a workshop session about certain aspects of things that may need to be hammered out.
Yeah, and on that same topic, coming out of the retreat and the discussion on it we had at the retreat, I had a compiled a list of data points that we wanted to see, and I sent that to Stephen. If there's anything there, Stephen, that you can't have in time for this workshop, just let me know. I trust you to bring to us what you can at the time you can, and if there's anything that's really, you feel is, you want to run, if you want feedback from me on whether or not something's, I feel something super critical for that discussion, just let me know.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I agree that maybe having it on a workshop is good. Now that we're doing our workshops starting at 7:00, that means people can make it. And I think that is something critical that we want involvement from those people that are involved in the baseball if they want to come. So it makes sense to give that opportunity. Anything about any of the other items that you see there?
I have something about an item that's not on there, but I'd like to ask about it if I can. And I know we've been, coming out of the retreat, we've had a lot of change, obviously, with Stephen coming on as the permanent town manager and everything. So we've been focused on more substantive tasks, but can we look at either in our next meeting or a subsequent meeting soon, adopting our council mission and goals document that we put together at the retreat? Just want to make sure that doesn't fall off of our radar.
Was that part of the minutes?
We did attach it.
Yeah. But we can bring it forward, for sure.
And I think what I'd like to see is work on the presentation of it a little bit.
Absolutely.
It's kind of just in a blank word document. Maybe in some ways, making it look better, that we can communicate, get it on the website, put it on the wall.
Yep. Yeah, and that's been part of, that's been one of my goals, is to have that in a more professional, not professional, but you know what I'm saying, kind of in a, how would we work this within the budget document? How do we put that on the website so it looks a little more clean?
Formal.
Yeah, formal.
All right, good. Yeah, and it's probably good, even though it was in our minutes that we presented it, that we actually take some action on it. So that it provides for discussion and clear direction. Any other items that you're looking for the next meeting or tonight?
Is there a reason, and I guess maybe I can't remember, why we put the Finance and Variance Report on consent? Is it just...
Yeah, it was.
Because I looked back, we started in August doing that, and I was just curious.
It was me.
Okay.
Yep, I kind of said, put it on there. If somebody has questions.
I understand.
And I think for the most part, you and I were the ones looking at it.
Yeah.
And I talked to you about, you know, send your questions early, and maybe if you get your answers, then we'll deal with it. If you don't get your answers, we'll just pull it.
And then the other thing, do we have, is there a violation in the PID? Or I'm curious on why Jennifer's coming before us. Did we have a violation?
Yeah, we asked her to come. The town got a letter of complaint. And because the PID is the town's responsibility and we have a contract with the MUD to serve the PID.
So we didn't get a violation, though?
No.
In the PID?
No. But the MUD had a violation that was in that, and it was, well, an alleged violation.
Okay.
And so we asked Jennifer to come present all of those facts. She's talked to the MUD board about it, but not us.
That actually, because that brought up, you know, it reminded me, and our PID violation is cleared now, so just FYI. I did look that up.
Yeah, the one with...
The infrastructure.
The infrastructure finally getting filed and accepted.
Yeah.
Yes. Would be a good time to maybe add that to the public record, Stephen, during Jennifer's presentation, or at least comment upon it. So, yeah, we asked her to come so that public could address those. The complaint items were actually posted on several Facebook pages, so they did become public. So we felt like it's appropriate to address them.
I'll follow those Facebook pages.
And there was also one with the water tower, correct? Was that all resolved?
With the what? Water tower?
Yeah, it's all, everything.
All right. Any other questions? Anybody on council question about tonight or... All right. We will then move on to citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council in any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Holly, have we had anybody sign up to speak on citizens?
No, sir. It's Pearl for the parks.
Pearl?
Pearl for the parks item.
For the parks item, right, okay. Nobody for citizens' presentations? All right, thank you. All right. We will then move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be re-tuned by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counsel, does anybody wish to remove any item from the consent agenda?
No, but I'd like to make one comment, if possible. I just want to tell Holly, I like how the changes for when we vote, she puts before what it looked like and after what it looked like, and it's very clear.
In the minutes?
Right. It's very clear, and then you can go to the document, and that's been changed, so it's nice tracking that like that. So I just want to make that comment.
Thank you. Holly, I would take credit for that suggestion, but I didn't give her that suggestion. I was very tempted to do so.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, Items 3, 4, 5, and 6.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Lamont and a second by Councilmember Perro on the consent agenda items 3, 4, 5, 6. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. In regular session, Item Number 7, Consider and Take Appropriate Action Regarding a Proclamation Proclaiming March 15th through the 21st, 2015 as Poison Prevention Week in Trophy Club. And the chair would ask for Councilmember Perro to read the proclamation and to make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town of Trophy Club, Texas, Proclamation Number 2015-04, 53rd Annual Observation of Poison Prevention Week, March 15th through the 21st, 2015. Whereas our society has become increasingly dependent on household chemicals to perform labor-saving, time-saving miracles, and on medicine to provide health-giving, life-sustaining benefits, whereas these products were not used as intended or directed, may be hazardous, particularly if children gain access to them. Whereas over the past 53 years, the nation has been observing Poison Prevention Week to call attention to these hazards and how proper handling and disposal of these substances and proper use of safety packaging can help eliminate them. Whereas the efforts of our community organizations, complemented by the efforts of the North Texas Poison Center, have reduced childhood poisonings in Trophy Club, Texas. Whereas the North Texas Poison Center, a regional poison center located at Parkland Health and Hospital System, provides the ultimate in human service programming, immediate accessible emergency information to save lives of victims of poison-related emergencies. And whereas these programs must continue as long as even one child swallows a household product or medicine by mistake, now therefore, I, Nick Sanders, Mayor of the Town of Trophy Club, do hereby proclaim the week of March 15th through 21st, 2015 as Poison Prevention Week in this town. Further, I direct the appropriate agencies in our local government to continue their cooperation with concerned citizens and community organizations, including our schools, to develop programs which will alert our people to the continued danger of misusing medicines and household products, and to promote effective safeguards against accidental poisonings among young children. Proclaim this 10th day of March, 2015, and I motion that the council approve Proclamation 2015-04.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Lamont, seconds. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Item 8, Consider and Take Appropriate Action Regarding a Proclamation Proclaiming April 7th, 2015 as Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service. And chair, once again, would recognize Councilmember Perro to read the proclamation and for a motion.
Town of Trophy Club, Texas, Proclamation Number 2015-05, 2nd Annual Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 7, 2015. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs, and whereas AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and counties, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veteran and military families, to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more substantial, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps participants serve in more than 60,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with both through their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to serve a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, City of Service, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 7, 2015. Now therefore, I, Nick Sanders, Mayor of the Town of Trophy Club, do hereby proclaim April 7, 2015 as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our town, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. And I motion that the council approve Proclamation Number 2015-05.
I'll second that.
And Lamont, seconds. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. No opposed, it is unanimous. Item Number 9, Consider and Take Appropriate Action Regarding a Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, Expressing Opposition to State Legislation Enacting a Cap on Property Tax Revenues Collected by Local Governments Due to the Negative Impact That Would Result from Loss of Local Government Authority to Manage Fiscal Matters to Meet the Needs of Its Residents and Providing an Effective Date. Now, that is Resolution 2015-07. And let's, let me read that for you. Whereas bills have been introduced to cap the amount of property tax revenue cities can collect each year in a misguided effort to reduce the property tax burden on homeowners and businesses, and whereas currently, if a Texas city increases property tax collections by more than 8% over the previous years, voters can petition for an election to roll back the increase. And whereas the existing 8% rollback rate represents an effective functioning model of limiting unchecked spending at the local level without impending a municipality's fundamental need to collect revenue to fund vital services. And whereas bills have been introduced to replace that 8% rollback rate with a hard cap of 4% and require mandatory elections on an increase over 4%, all with the false claim that this would provide property tax relief. And whereas, according to the State Comptroller's latest survey of property tax rates in 1,002 cities in Texas, 67% of the cities raised their property tax by less than 4% from 2012 to 2013, and 37% of the cities actually reduced their property taxes. And whereas, that means property owners in at least 669 Texas cities would have seen no reduction in their city property tax if the 4% cap had been in effect. And whereas, while the savings to individual taxpayers in Trophy Club for fiscal year 2014-15 would only represent $1.43 per month, it would cost the Town of Trophy Club $56,000 for the past fiscal year, and if 4% cap were in place, and it would result in a reduction in Texas's ability, town's ability, to provide exemplary services to its citizens. And whereas, if the calculation were computed for the previous 10 years, the cumulative impact would have been a loss of $198,000 to the Town of Trophy Club. And whereas, this legislation will force local governments to defer critical maintenance expenses for infrastructure assets such as facilities and streets, which will result in a more rapid decline of city infrastructure and ultimately cause increased cost of replacement. And whereas, property taxes will not be reduced through revenue caps, instead costs and the property taxes that pay for them will be shifted to support additional debt that will have to be issued to rebuild this infrastructure. Shifting taxes to pay debt is not a tax cut and will cost taxpayers more in the future since communities will not be required to pay the interest on these costs as well. And whereas, revenue caps will impair the use of local economic incentives, driving away the job growth and businesses that have helped to make Texas the economic development leader in the nation. And whereas, cities collect just 16% of the property taxes levied in Texas, and most of the property taxes paid to Texans, 55% go to school districts. And whereas, according to the Comptroller's report, the total amount of property taxes collected by cities rose by 3.61% between 2012 and 2013, while school district tax collections rose by more than twice that rate, or 7.72%. And whereas, local governments are the closest to the people they represent, and the state usurping that authority decreases taxpayers' input on how their money is spent in their community. And whereas, local governments are elected by the people to govern and exercise local control, and home rural municipalities are authorized by the Texas Constitution to regulate fiscal matters. And whereas, local government officials are held accountable by their constituents through the election process, and the authority of the local government should not be enroded by state regulations that disregard the individual fiscal needs of the total community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, that all of the above recitals are true and correct, that the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, is opposed to the legislative imposition of revenue caps and legislative interference with local services and local government control, and that imposing a revenue cap on cities does not provide meaningful tax relief, robs municipalities of the ability to meet local needs, and supersedes the level of government that is closest to the people, and usurps local authority granted by the Texas Constitution and the state law. I would like to move the adoption of Resolution 2015-07. If I receive a second, I would talk to it.
I'll second.
I don't know how many of you participated in providing input to Stephen after we introduced what was proposed by the city of Denton, but I think several people gave some input. And I guess you might ask yourself, well, why would this have any effect? The reality is that it probably has more effect if each of you individually would call your senators and your representatives. Quite frankly, it is the state senators that probably where you need to focus because that's where the bill is first. If it dies there, then we won't have to worry about it necessarily in the House. So a phone call from you to the legislative office of our senators that are local to us would have more impact because they look at it and say, you took the time to call. We'll send this, and we are asking you, if this does get passed, to wait till the end of the meeting, and we'll all sign it, so it will have everybody's signature on it. And Holly, I guess I would say that because Garrett's not here tonight, be prepared to print it without Garrett's name.
Okay.
Otherwise, it will look like that he opposed it, and he didn't express opposition to it, but he is absent tonight. You are welcome to make changes to this to see if you like to do that or not via amendment. If you remember the last budget discussion, we spent some time making sure that revenue cap didn't hit us. And we, in fact, looked very closely at how we wanted to make sure that we didn't adversely affect our interest and sinking fund that related somehow to all of that. And so we debated that strongly. I think the concern here is if a 4% cap was there, we very likely would hit that in a high-growth city when you're trying to add services. And so you would be, in one sense, weighing service A versus B because you were hitting the cap, not because the citizens were opposed necessarily to paying for more services. It is really the state trying to tell us how to do our business. And I can tell you that what they will say to you, because I've talked to them, is that the state is local control. A state senator and a state House representative is elected by their constituents and therefore they're local control, just like you are. I've debated that with them, that may or may not be true. You are elected like we are, but I don't know that we feel like you represent all local. And in this case, if the citizens didn't like what we were doing with the tax rate, they have an option to elect someone else and to come speak at it. So we've tried to make it address those issues as best we could. So anybody else want to comment?
Yeah, and the...
Yeah, and the, the good thing for us is Senator Nelson is the Chair of Finance, and Senator Hancock is on finance as well. Both are representatives in Trophy Club. And if you're keeping score, it's Senate Bill 182 and House Bill 365. And, and they're, he's also, the same senator has introduced another bill, Senate Bill 766, which also touches rollback rates.
Any questions? Any comments? None? All right, you have a motion before us. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2015-07, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous, Holly, and so if everybody would stay around to sign that today, we'll get it off. Last I heard was that it did not go out of committee.
The committee hearing got rescheduled to this week, which is a good thing because we can send in the resolution. We'll send it in tomorrow morning. I know that there are folks going down to testify. What I've heard yesterday is that it's unlikely that the House, it will go anywhere in the House at this point, but the Senate is, as the mayor said, is rarely where you need to focus your efforts. Or, and not only are your local senators, but also those folks that are on the Senate Finance Committee, contacting those individuals as well to let them know you're opposed to it also would be very helpful.
So what does happen, even though the odds of you actually getting to talk to one of the senators are rare at this point because they basically are going from meeting to meeting down there, their legislative aides log every call. And they, the senators and the representatives will actually get a sheet before they vote on that item, showing all the calls that were received, how many were pro, con, and what the comments are. So they do look at that before they vote, it's just hard to get to them personally this time of year. So don't not call because you think you can't get to them. All right, so we did approve that, we will move on. Is that right? We did unanimously approve it, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that right, Greg?
Yeah.
Item number 10, Consider Take Appropriate Action Regarding An Ordinance of the Town Repealing Ordinance 2015-02 Ordering and Calling a Joint General Election for the Town of Trophy Club to be Held on May 9, 2015 For the Purpose of Electing One Council Member for Place Three and One Council Member for Place Four, Each of, each for a Three-Year Term, Declaring Candidates for Place Three and Place Four Unopposed, Canceling the May 9, 2015 Election, Providing for an Issuance of Certificates of Election Following the Date for Canvassing of the Election, and Providing an Effective Date. So do I have some wishing to move Ordinance 2015-05?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 2015-05.
All right, may Pro Tem Lamont move, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Row, seconds? Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I went back and researched, and I think this is the first time in Trophy Club history that we've canceled an election. So, there you go. Lucky dogs, lucky dogs.
All right.
I researched it. And I, and I got, and I got Pearl's approval, so I know I'm correct.
All right, all those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign.
Garrett, read two.
Okay, wait a minute, I cannot say unanimous. I, I don't think I saw the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands. All opposed, same sign. Okay, it was unanimous.
I don't even know if-
This was the one time not-
I don't even know if Allen can make the second.
Yes, he can. All right. Item number 11, Consider Take Appropriate Action Regarding the Draft of the Seal Competitive Bed for Park Services for the Town as Recommended by CFAB, and Authorizing Publication of Notice of Bed Including Discussion and Action Regarding the Inclusion/Exclusion of Properties Within the Bed and Issues Related to Ownership of Properties. We do have one citizen that signed up to speak. I'll just ask Pearl if she wanted to speak now or wait until she hears some discussion.
I would like to speak now. I also speak, I think, have it changed?
No, you can speak later if you want to. All right, so Pearl Ford, if you would come to the microphone, please.
She can speak whenever she wants.
I'm Pearl Ford. I live at Two Spring Creek Court in Trophy Club. First, let me say that I understand the need for this council to get a better feel for the expenditures and where they are. I also understand it's an age-old opportunity for people to find out how they stand by doing an RFP. That's an old business technique. So, I have no problem with you doing that to find out where we stand for our services, and if they are cost-effective. I'm not against that. I'm not against anything, but I'm just wanting to give you some clarifications. How about that? The first area of clarification, and I'm on page, and you'll, I hope, these page numbers are the same. I'm on page 218 of 241. And it has to do with Medlin Cemetery. There is a document of understanding between the Town of Trophy Club and the Medlin Cemetery. That document of understanding was generated so that this, the information that you have with the cemetery and so on, so that could happen to finish the street, Trophy Club Drive. The reason I know that is a document of understanding. It became very fractional, I guess it was, between the Cemetery Association and the Town of Trophy Club, until it made the press. And like, I guess I didn't have good sense, but I volunteered to be the mediator between the two. And they, after many discussions, we got a document of understanding that was signed by the then-town manager Donna, Donna Welch, and the then-president. And that president is no, no longer the president of the Medlin Cemetery, because she's deceased and buried there. So I would suggest that, item number two, you said, that is, who owns it is unknown. That is true. Because it's owned by the association, since the cemetery was there before the town, but it was planted. I may be wrong with that. It's deeded, there are deeds up there in Denton County. Okay? But it was untaxable, so that's right, you may not see anything in DCA, because that's the appraisal district. So, that's my information to share. If you, if, I tried to look on my old computer to see if I had a draft of that DOU, not the signed one, but the draft of the one that was signed. I wasn't successful today, but I haven't given up. And I would suggest that they're in the archive somewhere, is the DOU. So.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure. Oh, excuse me a minute, hold on. Before you ask me a question, Mayor, may I have more than four minutes?
Oh, if I asked you a question-
Yes, you may have as much time as you want, Pearl.
Did, did it come, did the understanding come after the vote to approve the construction project, or before? Or do you remember?
It was before, because construction couldn't, could not proceed, because there was a discussion about how far was Trophy Club's road, and how far was an impeding on a cemetery, which was also a national, not a national, state historical site. And the Historical Commission came here for the discussion of that. So, that was a lot of stuff.
Because I, I look back, and I, it was 2002, I think, is where I found the minutes, where they actually approved the road construction. And, and I think then the cemetery came back, that was in, I think, March. They came back several months later because they, they actually were going to close the East median-
Well, that's a separate-
For safety.
That's a separate deal.
Right.
That is correct. They, they were going to close one of the, the East median for safety, but the problem was, if they closed that, none of the, what do you call it? I call them gravediggers, but they have a fancier name. Equipment, they, open the grave, could get into that. And that's when it came back, I'm sorry, that's why they came back for that. And they agreed to leave it open, because of the archway. Okay?
Okay.
But that was separate and apart from-
Right, right.
From the berm situation, the dirt.
Right. So, so, so when they first, I looked on the map way back, historical maps, so that berm, so they just actually kind of went through that berm, I guess, from looking, the berm was high, and they just kind of dug to, it's kind of odd the way it looks then compared to now.
Well, they just took all the dirt, and then all the dirt is on the Trophy Club Drive.
Right. And now there's trees.
But the berm wasn't there original, original. The berm got put there-
When they built the road?
No, when they built the golf course.
Okay. Thank you.
I got a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
The document of understanding, does anyone have it?
It should be in your files, I mean, in town files. But-
Any luck finding it?
I didn't see it.
But based on-
I've got landscape plans.
I guess, my other question is, you're saying the town manager signed it?
Yeah, Donna Welch-
It never went to the council?
Well, at that time, you know, back then, the town manager was authorized to sign it, I think.
Just that it seems to me, if it's a historical marker, that it should go before council.
Well, it, the historical marker was there before the town ever existed. Okay?
Might be nice, Stephen, for us to look for that.
I know Adam's, I know Adam's been looking for it, and he's found some of the documents, but we have not found that particular one, but we'll keep looking.
We have a landscape plan, Mayor.
It's TPN.
From T. Noll Perkins, showing the new design we were going to give the cemetery following that. We have the landscape plan from T. Noll.
Because they, you're correct, one of the things, thank you, one of the things in it, before the board of the cemetery agreed to sign the DOU, they wanted to have an idea of what it was going to look like. Okay?
So the memorandum of understanding specifically talked about the maintenance of it also?
I, I don't want to say that.
Okay. More, maybe more talked about just construction of it?
Yeah, I think, no, I think it was the maintenance of it also. You mean, maintenance meaning keep-
Upkeep.
Yeah. I think, yeah, that was part of it too. But I'm going to try to get into that old computer, if I can find a 95, and see if I can-
Stephen, do you think the Cemetery Association records might have a copy of it in their files?
They may.
They might.
That problem is similar to some of our problems is, let me rephrase that. That problem is similar to most organizations in document archiving. And from that case where they had a president who deceased some of the documents that weren't in the vault, I'm no longer on the board of Cemetery Association anyway, but I was at one time. Got misplace, let's put it that way. So, you could call the president, the current president, ask her if she has it.
All right, thank you. Pearl, go on.
Okay. Next item has to do with a general item on the turnover of stuff from the CIA.
Page you're referring to, or just in general?
Oh, well, yeah, I should get, be, there was a page that said, I don't, there were several pages that has reference to CIA turnover, but it just, 226, 241. That'll be enough for working.
220 also.
226. And this is just my recollection. Just so that some of you may not know, I spent ten years on the board of the CIA. Of those ten years, I was Officer, Treasury Secretary, and President. But I was not the president of the CIA when the turnover took place, took place, I think Mr. Moss.
Mr. Moss was.
Jim Moss was the president at the time. It was my understanding, though, that all the parcels that quote belonged to the CIA, and that meant, I guess, do I have to explain that the CIA was the only homeowners association for the whole town, or I don't have to do it?
You've done so now.
Okay. I got it in. So, if you see that, and you say it's the homeowners association, well, that was the only one, and then everybody belonged to it, including the lakes, for a short period of time. And so those properties that were designated as common areas, that's where they were designated in the CIA documents, and you can look in those documents, it was common areas. That meant that they were for everybody in the, to use. Those common areas supposed to have been turned over to the town as their property, as part of the turnover, and as part of the, you know, the liens that you got also. You got liens on property, and the common areas were turned over in the town. And that's my comment on those. And you will not find any deeds or anything in DCA for those common areas. Question?
On, on 220, page 220 and 226, it says, both properties are owned by the adjacent landowners.
I must be on the wrong place.
220, it's on both pages, there may be more, but on page 220?
I skipped 220.
Number two. Both properties are owned by the adjacent landowners.
Those weren't the ones I was including. Okay?
Okay, you go to 226.
220 is the one that the two properties are owned by landowners, right?
Okay, so you go to 226, it said, number two also, these properties are owned by the adjacent property owners.
226?
That's the page you mentioned.
Which is right along the road.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Right there across from the creek.
So I can explain at least 220 to you.
Yeah.
Because I used to live there.
Yeah.
So, so-
Okay, that's why I picked the wrong ones, but I'm just saying that a common, but these, the next page I'm going to is, what page? I lost the page, page 16. Okay. Page two, oh, shit, I'm sorry. I had it marked, and I pulled it up. What page is that, what's the courts, Creek Courts are on? I got it. Page 229. I only can address the Creek Courts. And since I live on Spring Creek Court, I might have a vested interest in this. But the Creek Courts areas, that's Creek Court and all the cul-de-sacs off of it, those streets at one time were not owned by the city. And I don't know the exact, I'll probably have to go and look at my vault. At one, I think two years into the city founding, they came to everybody on those streets and asked us to sign over the streets to the, to the town. And we were, and there were people talking, why? And when I told them they would have to maintain them, if they didn't, that was an easy sign, easy sign over. And that included those meetings. I'm sorry. I get, now I'm home, see? So I get a little upset. But that's what I know about the Creek Courts. All the others, I do not know specifically about, but I assume they were a similar kind of environment, those mediums. And those were the area, and you will find no DCA people in that because they were similar kind of thing. But you won't find any form of paper trail on those. And unfortunately, a lot of us, some of the things in the town did not get paper trails, a lot of stuff. They were done by either the people who were involved did a handshake and said this was a deal. And you won't find paper trails.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
Nope. Do you have any quest, other questions?
Anybody else have questions, Ms. Ford? All right. Thank you, Ms. Ford, appreciate that. At least on, was it 220, is that where?
The woods, 220.
Woods? Uh, cause I used to live at One Michelle, our property line went out to the curb on Trophy Club Drive and Michelle Court. Turns out that the sprinkler system along that area was installed by Mr. Beck who developed the woods. And, uh, they maintained it while, when I lived there. And all of a sudden, one day, we noticed the grass was dying and that nobody was mowing and turns out that's when we discovered that was the case. So, the homeowners that backed up to that area, we all tried to figure out if we could give the land behind the wall. So, between the wall and the street is homeowner land, but you can't really use it much as a homeowner when there's a brick wall there. So, we looked at trying to sell that to the town for a dollar or something, just a transaction. But the mortgage companies all raised a stink saying you have to get another survey, have to replat it, and that became just a big issue. So, it was simpler at that time just to say, okay, well, town take over the sprinkler and the mowing, you mow all the rest of this stuff and move on. Now Phillip, I think, asked during the week, or maybe it was Greg, who maintains the grass between the wall of Hogan's Glen and both Indian Creek and Trophy Club Drive, and the HOA does. You know, HOA mows that even though it's not much grass, but they do maintain that. And I suspect if we looked at those property owners, their property line goes out to the street. But I haven't gone to DCAD to see is that deeded to the HOA, cause we got lots of land in the HOA that's deeded to the HOA or was supposed to be. So, I, I think you've got that somewhat around town.
Well, here's the problem.
When development happened, it doesn't even show who the owner is in some cases. And the town just assumed mowing it because the grass would get high and nobody had ownership or had a way to deal with it and they, it was a way to make it look nice.
Here, here's the problem. In fifty years, when, when a future council's looking at this, there's not gonna be Pearl Ford coming up here. It's gonna be Phillip saying, well, Pearl Ford said that this was what happened, you know? And, and, well, the council's gonna say, who are you?
And you'll be like ninety-four in fifty years, so.
So, I, so that's the problem with this, you know, is that if we don't nail it down, or somebody doesn't nail it down, then a future council's gonna be just as confused as we are right now on who's what and what.
Yeah. And, and I, I agree with you Phillip, because a casual glance at this does not tell me that we're doing anything that's unreasonable. There's, there's logical reasons for just about everyone. There's a couple that maybe we can talk about as we go through. But we need to get it, we need to get it somewhere documented in such a fashion that a future landowner doesn't somehow cause us an issue or, or something of that nature without having to go through, obviously, the, the technical ownership, because all the barriers that Nick just described, those will still exist today and will always, that's not gonna change.
So, I made a note when Pearl was talking, it might be nice to either put in our minutes or put in this document that Pearl Ford believes that the Creek Court area represented on page two twenty-nine, that those, um, medians or pocket pieces of land were deeded over when the land, when the road was given to the town or something like that.
I believe that's two twenty-nine and two thirty.
Two twenty-nine and two thirty.
Two pages.
So, I, your suggestion, I think what you're raising, both of you, we need to document these things in a fashion that it will help us in the future. And whether we document them as minutes, uh, as part of our minutes so that they would be there, or I don't know that it's, at least in this where it says in some cases, ownership is unknown in some cases. Maybe we should be more specific. In page two twenty, the property was turned over to the town with the transfer of the CIA. I don't believe that's a true statement. Uh, I believe those lands are still in the deed of those landowners. In fact, that, that front area that's by the wall of the woods that slanted, was also being maintained by Beck. Eh, because he was, it's much like Turnberry or all those others areas, when they were building homes, they wanted them to look nice, so they maintained them. And then all of a sudden, all the homes are sold and they pulled out. And so who does it? Well, when you go back, that was kinda the history of the town, is that, well, they would be abandoned and so somebody would take them over, well, the town would take them over and maintain them.
And I, I don't, I don't disagree that we probably have a document on the cemetery. I, I, I do, you know, I bought a hundred tons of rock this week, cause our yard gets muddy and so I bought a hundred tons. It cost me twelve hundred dollars. So, that field dirt is probably the most expensive dirt in Trophy Club. Because we're paying, I think that we're paying about six thousand just this year, just to maintain that cemetery property. So, you, again, you go sixty years from now, we're still maintaining that because we made a handshake deal or, or a verbal deal. That gets into hundreds of thousands of dollars for field dirt. You know, and I agree, we probably needed it at the time, for whatever reason, we made the agreement. I would like to see the agreement, obviously, but, uh, but I think the, the problem with this is we can say, well, that's, we should maintain that, that's six thousand. Then we go down here, that's another six thousand. Well, we should maintain that, that's six thou, you know, and all of a sudden, it, it adds up to hundreds of thousands of dollars every year just to maintain property that we don't own. And so I, I agree, we do need to nail down, I think, what we wanna do and what we don't wanna do.
And I would ask that for the portions of these that are literally not owned, that we do some due diligence on as a town, what that means, cause I would imagine that there is a much easier path towards the town taking legal ownership of those abandoned and actually, like the one on Riviera Court or the median, all the median areas which are already in the right of way anyway. Things like that, I'm sure we can make that where we don't need any special paperwork because it can really be ours. Hopefully, if it's already, cause a lot of those, they're probably already platted that way. Um, it's these ones where you know there's an adjacent homeowner with access problems that, and we should be sensitive, everything's basically developed now, that we should be sensitive that a developer doesn't create, doesn't create an inaccessible portion of private land via development. Adam and I talked about that one day for something else.
And that's also, that's a good point, because the newer developments, there are, there is an HOA in place, which makes it much easier to work with because you're dealing with a centralized person or a board. You know, what, what makes diffi, what makes it difficult for, let's say, Indian Creek, is that there is no HOA along there. And if you live in the middle of that row, you're gonna walk your lawn mower, you know?
Yeah.
All the way around your street to go mow it. That's a difficult proposition and you don't have a company or a management group or any organized group that, to say, how, how is that gonna happen? So, that's, you know, the new stuff, you know, I would say, and I, I've kind of talked to council about, you know, I, I want something more formal between the new areas along Turnberry and I've got some ideas about how maybe we can do that. That, that would be a good thing for them, good thing for us. But some of the older parts, you know, if it's, if, if it's somebody's piece of property, you know, I think we ought to at least, you know, if it's next door to them, uh, you know, maybe we should talk to them about taking over the maintenance. The ones that are difficult are gonna be like, let's say, along Indian Creek, where you go, there's really no feasible way for that homeowner to really maintain it unless you're gonna start putting gates through the fence and things like that.
But perhaps we do what Nick said and we put it in the minutes that because of this situation, we will maintain, you know, I don't know. So, that somebody like me, forty years from now, that researches it, says, oh, okay, that's why they're doing it.
Yeah, and I, I think with the minutes, it's like having a document like this that is very spelled out, that says, this is the property, this is, that the thought behind it, this is why we did what. I, I, I agree, because twenty years from now, ten years from now.
Yeah.
I mean, you, you think about when some of these things were done, it wasn't, you know, we're kinda dealing with some sins of the past here, but we don't want is ten years from now that they're dealing with our sins from the past, so.
Councilor Lamont?
Uh, three things. Pages two twenty-nine, those are little islands. I think it's almost impossible to ask a homeowner that lives across the street to go out and maintain an island. So, I think we're responsible for those. I, I would agree with that. The other thing is if a homeowner, adjacent property, a little slip, can we charge? A maintenance charge? That we will take care of this for X amount of dollars? Is that legal?
I guess the council could wage an assessment. I mean, that would be.
If it's their land.
Yeah, well, I think some of these, adjacent homeowners, there's a.
I don't know if you can do that or not.
You could, for service now, for an public improvement, you could.
Or an improvement, you could.
We, we talk about handshake agreements between town managers. We got the mud situation. They're, they're not honoring the lease anymore. And they said, well, it was a handshake agreement that was never signed. We, we got that problem. I mean, you got it on one side, we're gonna, we're gonna do it on this side?
All right, Councilor Perrow?
Yeah, on page two twenty-one, um, there seems to be somewhat of a discrepancy about who's responsible for that particular parcel. Because it states that the staff believes the property was to be turned over to the town. But number two on the page says, both properties on this particular page are owned by Beck Properties. And if, we know they're owned by Beck Properties, then I'm wondering why are we maintaining his personal property if that's the case? And then on the following page, it continues on that same general area as in Eagle's Ridge, uh, about the property being given to Starwood Development, who in turn gave it to the town. And we insure the eagle, but then it says the property is owned by the adjacent landowner. So, so, we, we seem to know who owns those properties and yet we're insuring the eagle, we're paying, maintaining for that property. And, and Beck owned some of it, the homeowner owned some of it, and we seem to be able to state that with, with clarity, but why we're maintaining it.
Yeah, the corner lot where the eagle sits. Turns out that lot was platted that maintained all of that in their property. And when the guy bought that land, he actually felt like he owned the le, owned the eagle. And I, I was mayor during that time. And the citizens in Eagle Ridge at that time said that they had a right to form an HOA, but they had never formed an HOA, so they didn't really have one. So, the agreement was, and I don't know that it was documented in writing, but maybe in some minutes, that we would take over the eagle, uh, aspect of it. And I thought just the flowerbed area where the eagle was. Right?
The monument.
And that, but we didn't really own anything other than the eagle. And that should have been documented somewhere that we took ownership of it, cause we do list it as property on insurance. So, because it was fairly expensive. I think it's like in a lot of these cases, um, we just went through in Hogan's Glen, a number of pieces that were never, the deed was never transferred over to the HOA, that it still shows Beck as the owner, even though we've maintained them forever. And it just never somehow happened in the sense for a transfer. We just completed that, that all of the common areas inside our HOA that had Beck's name on it are now changed.
Would that apply to page two twenty-one then also for those parcels that are shown? That it says owned by Beck Properties?
Uh, no, those are not in Hogan's Glen.
No, I'm just saying would that same philosophy apply?
Well, no, because they don't have an HOA.
Okay. Does that understand? Those should have probably just gone to the town.
So, so Tim and then.
I just, um, wanna take a minute to go back to what Greg said, I, because I, I think I have a fundamental issue. And I'm just gonna give this example on, uh, on Trophy Club Drive. I have friends on both sides, on Hogan's Glen's side, I have a friend who lives right in one of those spots, and I have a friend on Jennifer Court who lives in one of those homes. And what it's stating to me is that Reese is lucky enough to have an HOA, so he gets to pay to have his lawn mowed. But my nice friend Rich on the other side of the street does not have an HOA, so he gets the town to mow the outside of his thing for free. Both nice guys. I, I just don't think that's the best way to do it. I, I, I understand that you're saying we can't charge. But we can, I guess, have code enforcement and have people come around and offer to, to mow all those areas and outside company and people to pay for it. Uh, I'm not saying that's the best solution, but you know, I do pay to have my lawn mowed. You know what I mean? I would love to have the town come down and do it. I'm sure everybody in the town would come and say that. Uh, I do have a fence, so I can say I don't get over to it. So, like, this case here is both guys live right across the street from each other, but one has to pay an HOA and the other one gets it for free from the town. There's gotta be some way that we make it a little more equitable. So, I thi, I think we should really look further into it instead of just saying, well, gee, that's what they gave us and now for the rest of their lives, the guy gets his, you know, he gets the grass mowed around.
I mean, like on. So, so let me kinda redirect this just a minute. The purpose of tonight is to look at the RFP documents. It doesn't matter who owns it at this point, you're gonna get a bid for that if it goes out this way. The decision will be whether or not you award the bid, including that piece of property or not. And in the meantime, until we get a bid back and we evaluate the bid and decide what we're gonna award, you can work on these legal issues a little more, but tonight, I'd like you to try to start moving your focus more on, are there any changes to the RFP document? Cause that's really what we're trying to move forward, not, the ownership issue came up and it's a key issue, but I don't know that we're gonna have all those answered.
But how can you go forward with it? If, if I am doing this bid and, and I have, how can I bid on this knowing that you've discussed it, council's discussed it, and I'm gonna put my employee on a piece of property that you don't own, you don't insure? You know, and if that, that employee gets hurt, I can't go after you. I have to go after that homeowner.
Well, oh, yeah.
You know?
When you say.
And so then, do, do we put the homeowner at risk?
Well, I realize that, but my understanding is they're gonna bid every item separately. So, you'll have a price for that particular section, and if they choose to no bid that, then they choose to no bid that.
Well, I, I will tell you that if we vote on this, I will vote against it until we rectify these issues.
Your concern is the potential liability we place on the homeowners.
Dual concern.
When we don't own the land and we're hiring someone to maintain it.
Correct. That, I, my, my problem is that, and my problem is it, until we rectify this, we're spending thousands, hundreds of thousands a year. And we don't, we don't, we don't know who owns it, we don't know if we're supposed to do it, so. I just don't think this is ready.
Like the lot on the Quorum Apartments, I mean, that's another great example. So, so, uh, Phillip, would your suggestion be don't go out for bid until these are solved? Is that your suggestion?
That would be, I think that would be a wise thing to do until we, you know, I, I hate to throw CFAB under the bus, but this probably should have never got out of CFAB to us with all these questions. And I know that we, we are the ones that brought these questions up. But I, I just, I don't feel comfortable sending it out until we.
All right, Mr. Lamont, and then I have Pearl Ford wanting to speak.
I, I would agree with Phillip. Councilor. I guess the question is, Adam, if we did send it out for pre-bid, is that more like an, an RFI where people would come in and say, well, we can do this, we can't do that, or we're not able to do this? Do you sort of gather the forces up and then figure out what really can be put in the bid?
Well, normally what you do is the document, as I was talking to Councilor Perrow, is very flexible. So, you can decrease numbers, you can remove sections from it, even after the, even after the bids have come in. You have the ability to do that. It states it in the document. If the document let, let's say for forty-five days, is, and that's what I would recommend, is do forty-five days. You would have, probably three weeks into it, you would have a gathering of the contractors who bid on it. It's a mandatory pre-bid meeting to go over the different properties. At that time, if we couldn't resolve this, we would, we would literally do an addendum. And I would just yank the properties right out of it. In other words, those would be something we could literally say, we're removing these properties from the scope of the bid. And that's just an addendum, and it takes them right out. I could do every one of these if that was the question. I'm just saying it's flexible, you could do it, you could remove it at that point. But the contractors come in and if you do see an area that is not receiving, you know, if every contractor says, none of us wanna touch this, then that's an area we could do an addendum and remove that piece from the entire packet as well. So, it's designed to be a very flexible document. So, if council said, listen, we want all the properties in here, we don't want them in the bid packet, then I would literally do an addendum with this document. And it would go, well, it would, it would probably go out with the packet. I mean, I could, I could remove the properties right out of the, the list. I mean, before it went out, I could remove every one of these properties out of the list itself, the master list out of the front of the document. So, they wouldn't even be in the bid packet, actually, if we did it at that point.
But here's the reality. You remove them, that means we still gotta maintain them. I realize we have to have certain, we have to maintain certain staff, you guys and a couple of maintenance guys for the everyday, day-to-day stuff, something happens. I get that. But if we have to retain all these properties, we've gotta keep the equipment, we got maybe even the. But if we have to retain all these properties, we've got to keep the equipment, we've got, maybe even need more staff. So, we're really not, it's defeating the purpose not to have that in there. That's why, so we should know, are we going to maintain this? Are we going to give it back to the property owners? I think before we send it out.
And that's, that's your prerogative, obviously. I mean, Councilman Schaffner's the one that brought it up to begin with, and it was a rather interesting exploration, Mayor. When I looked at the woods and I zoomed in, and Decat, of course, has disclaimers like, we may be wrong. But on the woods, it was interesting that that front property owner showed as the owner for the whole strip running down the end. I thought, well, that'd be an unpleasant supplies for those people. So, you know, however y'all want to approach it.
And that's one reason why we worded the agenda item tonight the way we did. Was so that council could give us direction to do certain things rather than just with the RFP, if you wanted us to. You know, because the fact of the matter is, is that going to some of these parcels and property owners, and like, let's just use the woods, for example. You know, pulling together those homeowners and saying, hey, this is what's going to happen. You guys need to organize and come up with something. That's, that's not something that's going to happen in a week. It probably doesn't happen in two weeks. And you've got smaller parcels, we need to have some direction from you. Which ones do you want us to? You know, Eagles Ridge, do you want us to go to Beck and send a letter and say, here you go? And, you know, it's sort of, those are those kind of questions that we need answered. And know that it's, it's, that's not going to maybe be a very quick process. But that goes back to what Councilmember Schaffner said, that if we really want to have these tied up as, as, as accurate as possible with formal agreements. Or at least some type of understanding of what's going on, that it's going to take some time to do that.
And the other thing, I mean, this is, he gave us fifteen or sixteen pages. Three, three, three properties on my notes aren't even on here. You know, and I, I actually had, somebody did an open records for my notes. And so, three of the properties, which is Trophy Woods not on, in these nineteen pages, which is Larry Stewart. Royal Troon and Parkview's not on this, which is over by the ballfields. And Fairway Village isn't, there's no median on Fairway Village. It's just right to the curb. So, I don't know really what you're talking about on that.
If I may, I can help you. I removed those because those were apparent. It was right away at Trophy Woods, so I pulled those out. As basically those are going back to the homeowner. The Fairway Village, the golf course is going to take it up to the right of way. We still have a median in there, so I put the median, the.
Where's the median?
Right in the middle.
Oh, you're talking about at the end.
Yeah, at the very end.
See, you've got it mapped all the way down on your.
There is a median part of the way down.
Yeah, but that's, that's at the end, that you go around.
Oh, my apologies, but yeah.
But, but Royal Troon and Parkview is the same situation we're talking about with the wall. So, that, to me, should have been in here as well.
Which Royal Troon has an HOA, so.
Royal Troon is part of the Highlands HOA. They're part of the larger. That's, and that's where I think we can go to Malcolm and work out something. I mean, there is an agreement in place. They're willing to honor it. We need to have something more formal than just an agreement that was made around the table, though, and I think that goes back to what council has said that I think's important.
So, let's see if we can decide what you'd like to do with this. One option is. Yes, Ms. Ford.
I just want, Councilman Kurtz, you were talking about somebody had HOA and somebody didn't have an HOA. Eagles Ridge, for example, currently doesn't have an HOA. But Eagles Ridge was part of the CIA. They paid dues to CIA. We, we did that deed restrictions, you know, people put up wrong fences, and I had to send them letters, tell them to take the fence down. So, yeah, they're a part. The, and Trophy Club, yeah, Indian Creek, that area. Those were separate, like, units. And if you get the packets out, you'll see that each of those went into the CIA also. Now, I'm not sure what you were talking about, so that's why I wanted to ask the question.
Yeah, I just happen to be.
I just happen to be looking at the picture, sorry. And on the corner of Trophy Club Drive and Indian Creek, so just as you come to the stoplight and you're right around the corner here on Trophy Club Drive. Corner of Hogan's Glen and across is Jennifer Court.
Okay.
Right before the church.
That's the woods.
The woods, yes.
That's the woods.
So.
Well, the woods.
So, on one side is, so on one side Hogan's Glen has the wall.
Yeah.
And they pay to have it mowed. On the other side of the street, there's the same wall, and the town is paying to mow that.
But you're saying on the woods side?
On the woods side, the town is mowing it.
The town is mowing it. On the other side, on Hogan's Glen, that's all I'm stating.
See, I was up Trophy Club Drive with the, the land that was, where the fences are, and like you said, you have to come and put a gate through the fence to mow that.
Yeah, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm just saying two people who live across the street from each other, one gets the town to pay for it, and the other has to pay for it themselves. That's my statement.
General comment I would like to make is basically to remind you that all those people. I'm not talking about the people who own that big lot beside themselves with the little pieces and so on, while you're nitpicking that. Those people pay taxes, and they need to get something from, for that taxes. So, be sensitive when you start doing that, because then you may have people marching here asking, what is that taxpayer doing? And you'll, you'll get that discussion in between.
Right, I don't disagree with that at all.
We spend a lot of money, let me finish, please. Spend a lot of money, I'm just sharing, you spend a lot of money for the sports things and the other thing, and you won't even cut my little three feet of grass. So, be prepared for that discussion.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
And I'm not going to leave it.
No, I don't, I, believe me, on both sides, I, I think they'll be complaining, so.
So, it was a confusing time over the years when development happened. Even when I lived in the woods, I couldn't go to the swimming pool because I couldn't join the CIA because I was not part of the CIA. So.
Why is Joyce on their part?
So, anyway, it was, it was very confusing, obviously, as development happened and there was not consistencies. One option you have is say, okay, let's pull pages or sites, A, B, C, D, or whatever they might be, and release the RFP and deal with it. The other way is release it, see what comes back, and we move forward. I think what we set out to do was to try to figure out, is it more cost-effective to maintain our own staff, equipment, all that? Versus use an outside service in some cases? And we broke it out to say, okay, we could award bid for medians, we could award bid for irrigation on medians, we could award bid for ball fields. So, it was done, I think, in a fashion that we could pick and choose what we want to do, and until you see what people bid, you can't do that. And I understand you may choose not to award it because of other reasons. It's just if you wait to do anything, and it takes us another month or two months to deal with these legal issues and decide on each one of them. You will not have a bid that probably is allowing you to look at what you're going to do in budget this next year. So, and that's okay, too, if you decide to do that. So, what's your choice? Yes, Councilman Perrow?
Yeah, in, in the pre-council meeting and talking with Adam Adams about this, this RFP. I'm comfortable with releasing it only because he's pointed out the way this document is written. They could bid on every single piece of it and gives us the basis for evaluating costs. And there's still the opportunity to, as he stated again, remove whatever section we didn't feel was appropriate or we felt after the fact didn't need to be done. It's not going to cost us any more. It's not going to cost that, that company more to give us the full bid. And then we can call out whatever doesn't fit. So, I think we should go ahead, in my opinion, based on that ability to make changes after it's released. To get it out there and let the numbers start coming back in so we can start evaluating what you just talked about and the potential cost savings.
All right, anybody else want to comment upon it, and then we'll decide what we're going to do?
I would just like to say that as far as taxpayers go, there are two HOAs next to each other on Trophy Club Drive. The Highlands and the Lakes. The Highlands get free water, and the Lakes does not. So, as far as taxpayers not feeling they're not getting anything, it applies to both sides, so I don't think we can look at taxpayers not getting something. We have to deal with this. Now, again, the free water is all verbal agreements. That's it, number one. In a verbal agreement with the previous town manager, then it was modified under another town manager just to include the maintenance of the irrigation system. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, the water comes from the ponds?
Yes, it comes from the ponds.
All right.
I have one thing.
Councilman Rowe?
I'll say with regard to the description of the properties that we're responsible for, I don't have an issue with it going out with those in it. Because I think at the end of the day, most of them, we're going to end up continuing to, continuing to maintain it. Even if we don't, it still provides an apples-to-apples comparison with the services we're providing today, which is, I think, valuable for the actual exercise. And then as we work through some of the, some of the nits here with, with some of these pieces of land, then those are probably not a giant part of the overall whole. So, for that purpose, I think that we can, we can take the two issues separately. I'd like to work the, the, the land responsibility issue. But I don't see any reason, at least why we need to go to, why the RFP has to be pulled just for that purpose. I think it can still serve a good purpose.
So, do we want to identify which properties are pulled?
If you think there's some that we can, if there's consensus that there's something could pull, then sure.
Here's, because here's the problem that I have, and this is, maybe Patricia can answer this. I'm bidding this and, and I, you know, am working at the cemetery. We have no agreement. Nobody owns it. Who's responsible if my employee gets hurt?
We actually require the contractor to provide the insurance. He has to provide workers' comp, and he has to provide liability insurance. And we have to be additional insured on that policy. So, if something happens, we're going to look to that insurance policy. If we get notice from a landowner or homeowner that, that we've done something, something to their property, we're going to their insurance. If they have an issue with one of their employees, their insurance will cover that, and we will make them be primary to protect our coverage. That's generally how we work on contractors.
So, what about the case of the people that live on Jennifer Court? Could you require the vendor to put as additional insured that property owner?
No, that's going to be way too fluid.
He could name us as the additional insured.
Yes.
I think that's where Philip's concern goes more in not necessarily the cemetery land. But all of those other little pieces that we're maintaining that might actually be citizen property owner. Is that right, Philip? Am I saying that right?
Yeah, I mean, I got a whole list of additional insurers that I have to do for my company because my drivers go on, you know, other people's property. And so, they require it. So, I, I just, you know, what's not ours, I think we need to be very careful. It's just my opinion.
I could just speak from experience on the lakes. Mostly time, it's foreclosures. And we have to maintain that property. And it's like pulling teeth to get our landscaper, because he's definitely afraid of any kind of liability. Or some guy happens to be living there, come out with a gun and shoot him because he's not his property, because it is a dead bush, you've got to remove it. I realize it's not apples-to-apples on that one, but under no circumstances will he go in the backyard. Because it's not our, technically, our property. Even the front's not our property. And he has full workman's comp, you know, it, we are not liable for anything. If he gets hurt, it's, because there's two different levels of workman's comp. So, he's got the full comp. So, we can get him to go in the front, but he will not go in the back. And he constantly says he wants a letter from us indemnifying him, and it's, I just think it's an issue. If you want to pull it off, that's fine, but I think until we resolve this, I, I can go either way on this one. I hate to say, that's a bad term.
Councilman Kurtz?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're all saying things that, you know, are pertinent to moving forward, except I believe that we should be outbidding it. And then, you know, working the two different issues simultaneously, instead of just talking all night about the same things, going around circle and circle.
All right, so I would entertain a motion, if someone wishes to do so, directing staff what to do with the bid.
I'll make a motion to take the RFP bid and have the town release it for bidding to start the process at the earliest opportunity.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Councilmember Perrow moved, Councilmember Kurtz seconded. It is before us. If someone wished to instruct the removal of one piece of property or several, they could amend the motion to say, remove those. Otherwise, it would be everything that's in the bid. Any discussion? Adam?
If it pleases the council and Stephen, depending on the timeframe we let this for, if it's forty-five or, I wouldn't go past sixty. If, if any of those can be cleared up, I could catch those in an addendum during the process itself.
Right.
So, I'm saying there is a possibility we will clear some of these up. You're right, there's no way we're going to get them all, but some I bet we can clear up.
I think that's our goal, is if we can clear some of them up, then that's what we want to do. And then at that point, you know, I, we'll see how many we can figure out. And some of them, I think quite frankly, are going to come to you and say, what do you want to do? Do we want to do this, or do we not want to do this? I mean, there's, at some point, there's going to be some action that I think council, you know, if it's a former piece of property or something there that, you know. You know, who knows? I think that we have some question marks on some of those, and so we'll come back to you and say, okay, what, what do we think is the best decision?
All right, Councilmember Schaffner, do you have anything you want to remove, or you?
No, I'm just going to restate that I'm going to vote against it until it's ready. I, I don't think that there's a rush to get this document before the next budget season. We can go to the following budget. There's not a rush. We've got a good staff in place. They can continue doing what they're doing. We can get this document to where it is ready to be released. And again, I think CFAB went a little too hasty on it, just my opinion. But I, I just don't feel comfortable releasing it until it's actually a releasable document, ready to go.
All right, any other comments? Do you have a motion before you to instruct the staff to release the RFP as it stands before us now? All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign?
Can I give you a yes or no?
I was a yes. I didn't ask the, all opposed, same sign? All right, Councilmember Schaffner and Lamont vote against, Perrow, Rowe, Sanders, and Kurtz vote for. It does pass. As a form of direction to Stephen, does anybody object to the fact that, that we say, Stephen, at least in the, in two meetings from now? You at least come back with some report about where you stand?
Absolutely.
So, if you want to add that to that agenda, that we get some kind of report or action, it could be that you're ready to take some action on those items.
My plan is to keep you guys updated on, on that front.
Yeah, and, and if there's any lack of clarity on how to proceed with the nebulous ownership of some of these pieces. Then by all means, you know, we should, I want to be aggressive with that because I'm all about getting the paperwork in order where we can.
There's surely a lot of pieces, and it surely needs to be documented better, because we will lose that history.
Mr. Mayor, do we need to give the town manager authority to file appropriate paperwork? If his research shows that the land is not owned by anyone, is it followed with the, with the county office to take over that land on behalf of the town? So, he doesn't have to come back to us again to ask for permission to do that?
That, we're not really agenda to take that kind of action, I would say. But we have asked him to come back and report to us, and that would be an appropriate thing that we deal with at that time.
Yeah, and I've, I've got a couple of ideas, and I'll, I'll talk to you guys individually about that.
I would like, on behalf of council, to express our gratitude to Adam and his staff and the town staff. And Philip probably looking at it in detail, looking at all the land, for the amount of work that was spent to get us to this point. It must have been something that was discussed some time ago, because I remember getting a phone call from a council member a few years ago about the specific property by the woods, because they said, we understand you have some history there. Would you tell us about it? So, Adam, you maybe remember that there was some discussion about it previously on that same topic that dealt with it. All right.
I'd like to thank, thank the great Pearl Ford for her history.
Here, here.
Well, I, I don't know that we can memorialize all of those. Well, I, I don't know that we can memorialize all of those comments, but Holly, it might be nice to see if you can capture from her verbal comments on tape, some items that we might like to memorialize. I wrote down one of them that dealt with the Creek Court area, and, and she had some history about, I think, the cemetery, maybe.
Yeah.
I'm going to look for the documents.
Yeah, okay. We appreciate you doing that, Pearl. Having it documented will sure help us fifty years from now, when, when Phillip is coming before council to talk.
And I'll be a medal.
Pearl will be a medal, okay. All right, item number twelve, Town Council Liaison Updates, Discussion of Sane, CFAB, March ninth meeting, Mayor Protem Lamont, you want to report on that?
Yes, they set up, they were tasked with four items that we had given them, and they set up three subcommittees, one with Roger Williams and Ralph Reed to do the Trophy Club Parks time and money aspect of it. They're going to meet March sixteenth around two o'clock, if that's the one?
They've rescheduled that meeting due to conflicts.
Whatever. The second one is Kathy Carlton and Neil Justice will look at the Trophy Club Park lease, and see, so they can educate themselves and bring it back, and see if there's any issues that they have with that. Then the vehicle replacement policy, they set up a subcommittee with Connie Edwards, Ralph Reed, and Roger Hillman to look at that. Now, the great John will be handling the liquidation policy and the preparation for the annual financial report, as he lovingly says, the P-A-F-R. And that's it. Do you have anything to add?
All right. Any questions about that report? All right. Item thirteen, Town Manager Sodell's update regarding the following discussions and provide input regarding Sane, Assistant Town Manager CFO, baseball, text dot sound wall, warrant roundup. Stephen?
First, Mayor and council and staff and the community, first, I want to thank you for tonight's reception. It was a really, at first, it's, it's a real honor to be able to be the town manager here, and I'm excited and thrilled that you have entrusted me with, with that opportunity. One of the things that will, I think, also be a great addition to our town is Stephen Glickman has agreed to come back as the Assistant Town Manager slash CFO. He was the town's finance director, and he was only here a short time before, but he did a lot of really great things in that, in, in that short amount of time, and I, I know, I'm really excited about him coming back. The staff is really thrilled as well, and it, it's a big bonus to our community and to our organization to have him, so I'm, I'm very excited to be able to announce that. Baseball, we mentioned earlier, Councilmember Schaffner, Adam and I will be meeting this week with them to discuss all things baseball, and we'll hopefully have a report on the twenty-fourth to, for discussion. Text dot sound wall, this is something that's been delayed. I, I have a meeting with Nancy Klein set up, who is the district engineer, to discuss the Highway one fourteen sound wall, and being able to move that project forward, or at least where it stands, or if it doesn't stand, what do we need to do to ensure that that moves forward? I had lunch with the Roanoke City Manager, and, and I know that they're on board with continuing the sound wall as it kind of goes into the Roanoke side of things, so I told him I would keep him posted on how that meeting went. And then on the warrant roundup, I know that in the last two days, we've surpassed what we did all of last year, so we, we've been fairly aggressive with that, and kudos to, I mean, this is a mul, it's not just a police department effort, it is a court, which is our court administrator, it's Patricia, who is our prosecutor, and it's our judges, primarily Judge Chambers, but it's also been special individuals within the police department, Barry Sullivan, Officer Sullivan, who is really taking the bull by the horns. I know Chief Arado supports this, and I know that my stance is to be a little more aggressive with what we can do to clear those outstanding warrants, and make sure that there's a process there to, that every, every means possible, whether they can call in and make the payment, or if we have to actually go to their house, that's, that's what we have to do. I know Keller's been pretty happy with a couple of our contacts, because they, they have some, they have some issues as well with some of the folks that we found, so overall, it's been a really a great effort, and it's something that I think we can build upon, not only during the year. This is not, for me, a one-week deal, it's a, it's a year-round deal for me. This is just sort of kicking off, and us putting a process in place, but great job to everybody involved, multiple departments and multiple individuals.
Thank you, Stephen. Does anybody have any questions of Stephen?
All right. I just want to say thank you for bringing back Glickman. And I know, I'm probably not supposed to say this, but Smarty Pants is back.
Smarty Pants is back? And you put that on recording?
Yes.
That's as bad as Ryland and women can't play baseball.
Well, let me, let me say, when I interviewed Glickman the first time, I asked him what his greatest, you know, what, like, what, what would he say would be his greatest asset? And he just looked at me and goes, I'm smart. And, 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 you know, it's like, all right, that's, okay.
That's why he came back.
Okay, this has gotten out of hand. I can see that right now. None of that should be in the minutes.
Look, it's only eight-thirty, we're, we're still alive and kicking here.
You are, aren't you?
Speak for yourself.
Okay. Item fourteen, Items for Future Agenda. Councilmember Rowe was suggesting that we bring back council goals and objectives, to formalize those. If you want to add that to the future agenda, so that we don't lose it, I know Stephen will bring it back to us. Did anybody have anything else to put on the future agenda list? And we're going to remove item six, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Council, we have only just a very brief update in reference to property, and so I'm going to take us into executive session, hopefully for a brief time, and, and then we should be able to adjourn. So it is eight thirty-seven, or something like that. And pursuant to Section five fifty-one oh seven-two, deliberations about real property of the Texas Government Code, annotated subchapter five fifty-one, Texas Open Meetings Act, the council will enter into executive session in order to deliberate the purchase exchange lease or value of real property where deliberation and open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person. Potential sites for the location of the new police and town hall facility, annex building, and potential lease of property. Council, we are in executive session, take a short recess and then come back. Nine twenty-seven, we will reconvene into regular session. Item sixteen, consider and take appropriate action regarding the executive session. We do not have any action to take at this point. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Lamont moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Third, fourth?
Second, by Perrow. All in favor, show your hands. It is you.
Garrett's not here.
It is unanimous, we are adjourned. Golly gee, you guys are doing it to me.